Now we're cooking. All right, it is seven o'clock. And we will call this meeting of the Hartsfield-Trousedell County Planning Commission to order. Uh, road call, who's gonna do the road call? Oh.
Sorry.
I missed you over there, Mary Ann, I'm sorry.
My allergies are bothering me, so I thought I'd wear my mask. Uh, Sarah Murray. John Kerr.
Here.
Rhonda Keesling. David Nauner.
Here.
David Thomas. Carol Pruitt. Mark Swaffer.
Here.
Thomas Harper.
Here.
Sam Edwards.
Here.
Six here and one, two, three, four.
We do have a quorum, so we will go on with tonight's agenda. Uh, first thing on our agenda is approval of the August ninth minutes. Mary Ann emailed out a copy of those to everyone, you should have had plenty of time to look through those. Has anybody noticed any corrections or updates or anything that might need to be added? Or anything taken off? If not.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Nauner has motioned to approve, Mr. Harper seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. They are approved. Uh, we do have our agenda in front of us, does anyone have any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Okay. Uh. If I could get a motion then, to approve our agenda for tonight, we will go with what's on our agenda. Motion by Mr. Harper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swaffer to approve tonight's agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, our agenda is approved for tonight. Having no old business, we will move right into our new business. First item on new business is final plat approval for Rolling Meadows, which is located on McMurray Boulevard West, map nineteen parcel five point oh four. I believe this is the subdivision uh, with uh, the Carmans uh, are looking at, I believe little James involved in this, uh, Jim, are you here for that?
Uh, sorry, you skipped, you skipped.
I'm going with what's on, the first item on new business on my agenda.
I think I have the staff report in the wrong order, so skip to item two, staff reports in the wrong order.
Oh.
Okay.
Skip to item two.
I was reading about this, but we all roll the metals?
We are.
Okay. Yes.
All right, you have a copy of the plat for final approval of the Rolling Meadows subdivision, which is uh, I call it the one down by Blankenship's car repair. Uh, that's how I keep up with it. Uh, Sam, would you like to speak to this, please?
Um, I don't, I don't see any errors, issues that we've got. Uh, he's, he's met the mailbox restriction, we've got a dedicated lot for it. We have two parking spaces and a sidewalk that goes to it. The sidewalk does wrap the entire subdivision. Um, he has maintained the commercial on the front like we asked. Um, I think the subdivision is good for approval and Mary will go over the details on the engineering.
Any members of the commission have any questions for Sam? All right, Mayor?
Just to clarify, I'm going over any variances that would be required from the subdivision regulations standpoint, not necessarily the engineering. Uh, so for the zoning district standards, all the proposed lots exceed seventy-five hundred square foot, which would be the required minimum for the zoning district, so it is set from that standpoint. Uh, the first item that would require a variance to be reviewed or considered from the subdivision regulations um, would be from section four dash one oh three point one oh six blocks. Uh, that section states that block lengths in residential areas should not exceed sixteen hundred square feet nor be less than two hundred feet, except as the planning commission deems necessary to secure efficient use of land for desired features of the public way pattern. Wherever practicable blocks along arterials or collectors should not be less than a thousand feet in length. Um, because this property is on highway twenty-five, the block length in the whole area, which would be what we're measuring for where you can go in and out and complete a block, I know that's kind of confusing language, um, is gonna be greater than sixteen hundred square feet, so it's going to take you, you know, a longer distance to get around a full block. Um, to facilitate the possibility of a future block connection that would meet the subdivision regulations standards. What you would be asking him to do in this case, if you didn't issue a variance, would be asking um, requesting that Rolling Meadows Avenue down the middle there be continued to the south property line for future connection to the adjoining property in the event that it develops. So that would be what you would be asking for, if you wanted him to facilitate the opportunity to create a bigger block in the future, it would be him that would create the block, it'd be the property as it develops to the south. Um, second, the subdivision regulations state that in any long block, the planning commission may require the reservation of an easement through the block to accommodate utilities, drainage facilities, or pedestrian traffic. Pedestrian walkway not less than ten feet wide may be required by the planning commission through the approximate center of any block that is more than eight hundred feet long in that easement. Were deemed essential to provide circulation or access to a school, playground, shopping center, or transportation facility, or other community facility. Yellow Jacket Way, which spans the length of this property, is fourteen hundred and nineteen feet in length, and it's about eight hundred and forty feet from Rolling Meadows Meadows Avenue to the end of the cul-de-sac on the east end. Uh, the planning commission, and I just wanted to point out, might consider requesting a pedestrian easement to have a walkway to provide a connection for those eastern lots to that commercial parcel on highway twenty-five. In the event that it develops and you wanted to have a potential connection for those homes as opposed to going all the way out the block um, and up Rolling Meadows to get to, you know, whatever commercial might be at the front of the property. That is the intent of what that portion of the subdivision regulations states in my understanding. For the next item is uh, from section four dash one oh three point one oh seven, access to arterials and collectors. Um, where a subdivision borders on or contains an existing or proposed arterial or collector route, the planning commission may require that such access to that public way be limited by a marginal access or public service way separated from the arterial by a planning strip or grass strip and having access at suitable points. The number of residential or public ways entering on an arterial or collector routes should be kept to a minimum. So in this case, this is not necessarily um, something that's being developed with this property, however, looking forward, um, highway twenty-five is an arterial route in the major thoroughfare plan. So, in the, with the intent to limit access points to highway twenty-five, staff would suggest requesting a cross-access easement for the two commercially zoned parcels on either side of Rolling Meadows Avenue to at some point use Rolling Meadows Avenue as an access point, so as public service way or drive that's separate from highway twenty-five could go across and access those two properties in the future. That would be the suggestion there. The last portion of the staff report addresses the cluster mailbox units, um, and the item here was that a staff or a site plan needed to be provided, which has not been provided at the meeting. And it looks like the two parking spaces that are required are provided and there's sidewalk access in the mailbox. Um, the only thing that I would note is that um, cluster mailbox related improvements should be prohibited within the public right-of-way or any utility easement unless written permission is granted from the easement holder, so it looks like just the sidewalk and the parking will fall in the power transmission easement, so we just might need clarification that the power transmission easement holder would be okay with the parking and the sidewalk in there, which says they'll just be on the ground anyway, and I'm assuming it's an overhead power lines, correct?
It's strictly an overhead easement, they don't have any.
They don't have anything on the ground. Okay, and yeah, so the. Just an overhead, so in the mailbox. And it looks like you have, the structure will be entirely outside. Okay. Okay, so that portion is set then as well.
Hey Mary, where's the call out for the mailbox cluster, I can't find it.
It's the A.
It's A up at the front.
Yeah, it's off Rolling Meadows Avenue, it's the first tiny little unbuildable lot there.
Says unbuildable under that A, what does that mean?
It means it's not a buildable lot, so we can't put anything there, because it's smaller than the zone lot required size. So it's creating a lot, but it's.
It's basically we're creating a dead lot just for the mailbox.
Basically, it's so he can transfer the lot to the HOA.
We're creating a dead lot just for the mailbox, so nothing could ever be built there, except for that mailbox. It's an unbuildable lot.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Mary? Yes, sir.
It's uh, for hydrants and that?
I would think that, I don't know, but I would think it's engineered for that, I mean, I would think that whatever the regulations require.
Yes, we've spaced the hydrants to where they cover all the lots in respect to the subdivision regulations that we have.
I noticed you got six inch line for all of them. Okay, thank you.
Jim, I see the water line and sewer line, uh, I know natural gas is down there, is it natural gas going to?
Be available.
Uh, I cannot honestly answer that question, it's, it's not normally a a, necessarily a mandate.
No, it's not, I just, it was actually just a question.
It has crossed my mind, I don't know that it's crossed the owner's mind, so I can't answer your question.
Well, I, I just knew it was there, so.
I couldn't even tell you it was there.
You know, I would think that would be a nice uh, addition to selling lots there.
I would say they would need, at least need to.
Look at it.
And look at it and, and probably leave an easement of one side or the other for the installation of it.
I was also asked Saturday uh, about, do you happen to know the price range of what these?
I do know.
Somebody was asking me if it was gonna be more on the affordable side, and I said I didn't know.
I, I couldn't tell you that, they may have to get all the infrastructure built to actually calculate what they got into.
Well, that's true, very good point, especially now that they might add natural gas.
Yeah.
All right. Does any commission member have any questions? Or any concerns they'd like to discuss at this time?
Has T-Dot mentioned uh, the access, is that fine, seems like to me in the past forty-eight lots was near or over the, the limit to have a lane, a dedicated lane from, from the, from the main highway.
I, I don't, I don't know that, I know that the owners would have to work with T-Dot on that, that's not really something that we would have to address, because T-Dot will take care of that themselves, am I right on that, Jim?
Yes, you are correct about that, I can't give you the exact number, but they will have to get all their permits from T-Dot before they can start any construction.
Gotcha, thanks.
Anybody have any questions for Jim while he's uh, speaking to this matter? Mayor, any comments?
No.
All right. No commission member has any questions or comments or discussion items about this final plat approval, I would accept a motion to either approve or deny the plat. Including the variances and things that Mary had uh, included in her report. That needs, if it's an approval, that those variances would need to be added to any motion. Yes, Mr. Nauner?
I make a motion to approve this plat with those, with theirs.
Variances included?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve with the variances included, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Harper, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. It is approved. Jim, you want to say that? All right, moving along, the next item under new business is a rezoning request by the owner uh, from, that owns map parcel, map zero nineteen M parcel seventeen point zero zero, which is located on McMurray Boulevard East. The owner is requesting a rezone from R one to C two. This is, I don't know the name of that subdivision, but it's the uh, Jerry Ford and Jason Ford property.
Hickory Ridge subdivision.
Uh, they're going towards the triangle of highway twenty-five and Main, East Main Street. Is there anyone here to speak to this rezoning request? Okay. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Matt Sintra, I'm a new resident, we just bought in Hickory Ridge subdivision. Uh, and we have, we've heard about Mr. Ford's plans, you know, to go forward with this, and I, along with other, others in the subdivision, have generated concerns, but I guess it wasn't very very well advertised that this was gonna be addressed tonight, but uh, I guess our, a lot of the subdivision, residents there's concerns, I guess, would be how the, how a commercial zone zoning would affect our property values. On top of, like, my house, for instance, uh, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but there's been a lot of, I guess, with the drainage issues in the past. Uh, the foundations on my house and several others have been affected by that. Uh, and I'm afraid, it's just, you know, me personally, that a lot of heavy construction in that area is gonna further that damage. And that's one concern, and then two would be, you know, the influx of traffic, like, you know, I don't know what the plans are as far as routing throughout the subdivision, I know they're in the process of extending it and building more houses as we speak, but I don't know if there's gonna be, you know, passage on through to Halltown Road, or you know, how that's gonna affect, are we gonna have outsider traffic coming through the neighborhood, because we have no sidewalks, uh, you know, things of that nature, so that would be, you know, my, one of my main concerns as far as how it would affect me as owner in that area.
Appreciate your comments uh, for the homeowners in the, in that subdivision. Uh, of course, you did say you were new, uh, just for your knowledge, this body is a recommending body, either for or against. The final decision would be made by the Trousedell County Commission, which one of their uh, hearings would be a public hearing. Just, just wanna make sure you were aware of the whole, the process. Anyone else here to speak to that? All right, Sam?
So, just like on uh, Rolling Meadows subdivision, um, I made myself clear that I believe everything within the city limits on highway twenty-five should remain commercial. I don't personally believe this should ever have been allowed to change in the first place. Um, when they came through with a plat for Hickory Ridge, it should have been uh, they should have been made to keep at least a few commercial lots at the front for commercial business. Um, not necessarily this size, uh, but the front portions that actually touch twenty-five in the city limit should remain commercial. So that, in my opinion, was an error when this was approved the first time. So this request is not um, it's not unreasonable. So if anybody's got any questions for me, feel free to ask. Um, if you, if you wanna call me, um, I can answer a lot of those questions tomorrow.
Yes, Mr. Swaffer?
I mean, without the owners here, or somebody representing them, this come before us before.
Yeah.
I believe, I can't remember what year it was, right?
I believe it was a little over a year ago, uh, this, this item came up. It, it was in conjunction when there was a group of individuals uh, contemplating building a hotel.
Right, that's where we're from.
In, in the, in the county. And uh, this was one of the properties being uh, looked at. I mean, it never got past the looking at stage, as, there were several properties, but this was one of those, and, and you're right, at that time, uh, Mr. Jerry Ford came before us and asked to rezone it back to commercial.
I can't remember if we voted it down, or the county commission voted it down.
I think we approved it. And, but the county commission voted it down, I, if I'm not mistaken, that's what happened, Mayor, do you remember the details?
Yes, sir, I think it got voted down at the county commission. And I think they can't come back for at least a year, and I know it's been longer than that, but it failed at the county commission.
Personally, I agree with Sam's comments. Uh, it never should have been allowed to have been residential to begin with. Highway twenty-five is the commercial corridor of Trousedell County and the city of Hartsville. If we get any new businesses, they're going to want to locate in or on the highway twenty-five corridor. Um, Mr. Moreland, who bought some land right not a half a mile below this property, uh, has already told me that his front lots are commercial, going to be kept commercial. Uh, and it's a, it's just pretty much a given that, that, I mean, if you go through Lebanon or Galifin, it's not unusual to see commercial properties and then subdivisions in behind them on their main, on their main highways especially. Because those are the commercial centers of those, of those cities. Yes, sir.
So, we could also keep in mind that we passed that fence ordinance with the vegetation barrier. So at any point in time when a commercial business does decide to go there, they have to put the seven-foot fence up with a vegetation barrier to separate them between any residential lots.
Any other?
His, his application says for development, do you have any idea what he's wanting to develop, what he's gonna put there? Is he just wanting to get it rezoned so he can sell it, or? What's the purpose of the?
From my understanding, at, at this point, there is no plans. Um, he's just wanting to rezone it because he's not planning on making any residential out of it.
Mary, do you have some comments you'd like to make on this?
Yeah, um, I'll just run through the staff report as I typically do for rezonings, so we're all on the same page with what's in the general plan and the zoning code language. Um, the properties on the north side of McMurray Boulevard East and on the either side of the intersection with Hickory Ridge Lane are um, zones are one, the surrounding properties to the north and east are zoned are one, the property to the west is R three, and the properties to the south on the other side of McMurray Boulevard are zoned are C two, which is the zoning that is being requested for these three properties. Uh, these three properties are in the Hartsville-Trousedell Water and Sewer Utility District, there's a six-inch water line on Hickory Ridge Lane in this area, and eight-inch and twelve-inch lines on McMurray Boulevard. There's an eight-inch sewer line that crosses McMurray in this area, and the property is not within a special flood hazard area and is not identified as having any significant steep slopes, which would be slopes greater than fifteen to twenty percent. The two thousand Trousedell County Growth Plan identifies the subject property as within the Hartsville Urban Services District and a plant growth area. McMurray Boulevard is identified as an arterial in the major thoroughfare plan. And Hickory Ridge Lane is not identified as an arterial collector, um, as it's in the street. The R one zoning district, which is the current zoning district, is designed to provide suitable areas for low-density residential development characterized by an open appearance, most generally this district consists of single-family detached dwellings and other structures accessory to, and no commercial uses. The C two highway commercial zoning district, which is requested for the rezoning, is intended to establish areas in which the principal uses of land are devoted to general and highway commercial activities along the principal thoroughfares in Hartsville. Regulations are designed to preserve the traffic carrying capacity of the streets and roads and to provide for necessary off-street parking and loading. All lots should be considered fronting on either arterial or collector roads as indicated on the major thoroughfare plan. The uses that are permitted in the C two zoning district are included on page three and four of your packet. If you want to view all of the uses that would be permitted by right um, in this commercial zoning district, the use that's permitted by an special exception would be the telecommunications facilities. So that would be a use that would be permitted only if it went through the process for a special exemption of the board of zoning appeals and met those requirements. The required minimum lot size in the zoning district is ten thousand square feet, and the setbacks are listed in your packet on page two. So each of these three lots that are being requested for rezoning exceed ten thousand square feet in size. The total area is about four point two three acres. So the maximum density permitted in the zoning district would be about eighteen commercial lots, if you were again to max out the density with no consideration for what kind of infrastructure would have to be put in to service that. That's just based on size. And staff surrendering of this rezoning request, the properties are not constrained by flood plain or steep slopes, and they appear to be served by utilities or are near enough that utilities could be feasibly extended. The C two highway commercial zoning district is noted as being suitable for principal arterials through Hartsville and on routes indicated as arterials are collected in the major thoroughfare plan. McMurray Boulevard is noted as an arterial in the major thoroughfare plan. And there are adjacent properties on the south side of highway twenty-five that are zoned C two highway commercial. Uh, so there is nearby zoning of the same. Staff would have some concern about the need for additional access points to highway twenty-five if these properties were to develop as commercial uses. However, points of access and potential cross-access could be discussed at plating and site planning phases if the property were to develop.
Any commission member have any questions for Mary?
Is the request to rezone three properties, or not, not consolidate into one property, correct?
Correct, the request at this time is to rezone the three properties, not to consolidate them. So my calculation is just based on that whole area. So my calculation is just based on that whole area, not lot by lot. But one of the lots is about an acre, is a little over an acre, and then the other is 0.73 acres and 0.9 acres. I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong one. One is 2.3 acres, 1.1 acres, and then 0.73 acres.
I like the math that's been included in our packet that shows Highway 25 and the potential commercial dish zones or areas that we would have. And one of the things that constrains us on commercial property is the availability of sewer access. We don't have a lot of that. And the Highway 25 corridor does. Mayor, you got any comments about this rezoning since I'm sure it's going to be a county commission issue and?
No, I just do know that in the past, the tracks that were on the highway were reserved for commercial. And I think that was a specific request to this commission when Mr. Moreland came through and we want to do subdivision, there's a request that he keeps those two front parcels commercial. And that he did do that and it'd get, get approved by the county commission as those two front lots be commercial. I do share Ms. Turner's concern about where traffic's going to come in and out because you've got three access points right there all close together. You've got the church driveway, you potentially have this, and then Hickory Ridge turned off. And then this new apartment complex and everything, so that's four in a real tight radius right there. So I'd be concerned about that, but as she said, that could be addressed when that, if they actually have something come through, which right now I don't know of any plans to develop the site. They're just asking to take it commercial. That's my thoughts on it. I do have that concern, but that's a concern we're going to start having no matter where we develop.
All right, commission members, questions, comments, concerns? Any discussion? I've already stated mine, so.
I'll state mine.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm just, I have concerns with the residential, the subdivision behind. If you pass this down in C two, he could do any one of the allowed uses. And I think we all just need to be really careful, you know, what could be put right in front of a subdivision. You know, you've kind of, if we do it C two, you can have a restaurant or a tavern. Automotive parking lot, animal care, veterinary services. I mean, there's just a lot of uses. And I don't, I have concerns with that, what's it's going to be used for. And I don't think that the owner is not here to speak to that, which concerns me. What's his reasoning for?
Again, my only comment to that would be if you drive down 31E in Galatin and you look over there to, to well, I can't think of the name of the, but all those restaurants over there were Pizza Hut is and Arby's and right behind there is a subdivision. You know, I mean, that's normal.
So if, if you look down 25 and you pull up the zoning map, we have allowed many locations to swap to some kind of residential use and that should never have been allowed. It's 25 should have stayed commercial all the way through. There shouldn't be no breaks in it. Your concerns are valid, but if you look at like Rolling Meadows and the other subdivision that we just approved, we, we requested that to be commercial, which puts them in the same situation. But we also approved that seven foot fence with a vegetation barrier to take care of that. Which is the same thing that Galatin, Lebanon, and all, all of them do. They have, they have that barrier. So they will have the separation between the lots, but they will also have separate access coming out of there. So in, for example, in Galatin, like the dentist that I take my daughter to. They have four businesses, but because T dot only approved one access, they share their parking lots so that they only come out in one area. So the access to the road will be minimalized.
Like I say, they do this everywhere. My concern would be how are we ever going to get in the new business if there's no place for them to put one? Again, that's me. I'm done. Any other members of the commission have any comments? Would any member of the commission like to make a motion to either approve or deny the, the request? Well, surely we can do one or the other. If you're not for it, you're going to deny it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny it.
Okay, I have a motion to deny the request. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nong? All in favor of denying this request, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Chairman votes no? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Well, I'm not sure I got, let's do a vote again. I want to just make sure we, where we are, or do we want to put this off? Until, and request that the owner show up and explain what they're wanting to do.
I would like to make that motion before we, that the owner be here, you know, and we've always done that in the past. You know, on a rezone, you know, we, that the owner is the one that requests the rezone, you know, with the the apartment building behind or Higgy Wiggy. We, we deferred that because owner was not there. And I think that's
I don't have a problem with it. We just have to do the, if that's what the majority wants to do, we just need to, uh, Mary Ann would need to withdraw her motion.
I was going to say I'll rescind my motion if we're, and then you could, he can make the motion.
Is that the correct method, Mr. Mayor? Motion first and then second, or would it be second, first, and then motion?
Uh, let's see here. I'm thinking. Well, you've already had a motion and a second. You've already done a vote.
Yeah, but I'm not really sure how the vote, I'm not really sure how the vote turned out.
Well, it sounded like it was two for or two against and one, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I think it turned out with three noes and two yes.
Three noes and two yes?
Yes, because I think Mary Ann voted deny as well as Mr. Nolner and then Swaffer. Mr. Tom. You all voted no on the motion to deny.
Okay, so the motion failed to deny. Does that mean it's approved?
No.
It means it goes forward with a recommendation to deny the rezoning request, but the vote is
in favor of it.
In favor of approval. I know it sounds very messy, but that's how it would
So in other words, we can't, Mary Ann can't rescind her motion.
Because we'd already voted.
Mr. Nong can't rescind his second.
Mayor may have a different understanding, but that's my
Yeah, a member of the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider. That has to be properly seconded, passed, and then you can reconsider the item again. And then if somebody wants to make a motion to continue it until next month's meeting and request that the owner be here, I think that'd be the proper mo-
Okay.
Proper procedure.
Well, then as a member of the prevailing side, I, how, what is the motion? To reconsider?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to reconsider this rezoning request. I would need a second then from one of the others on the prevailing side. That's not her. It's either one of you two.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Harper. All in favor of reconsidering this motion and, or this item, please say aye. Any opposed, say no? Okay, it does, it is up now for reconsideration. So now we can start the discussion again and it seems like the, the main item of discussion is, is that the majority of the members of the commission would like the owner of the properties to be present to explain whatever uses or whatever items they have and to be available to answer questions from commission members that they may have about the property. Am I correct in my
Correct.
summary? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion then to defer this request? Motion by Mr. Harper to defer this item, second. Second by Mr. Swaffer, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no? All right, this item is then deferred. I think this actually gives you a better chance. You can, more neighbors can come and you're not necessarily going to be able to question the owner, but you would have the opportunity to speak. Instead, and we will, hopefully, you might want to check your VITET or every how you get your news to see which month the owner decides to bring this item back up. Okay. So the rezoning request has been deferred. Discussion topics, Mayor Chambers would like to discuss the multimodal access grant project from Depot Street North to the Broadway McMurray Boulevard intersection. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I participated. I'm going to take this off. It's all out here. I'm social distance from Mr. Nong. I participated in a Zoom meeting with representatives from Tennessee Department of Transportation, our RPO coordinator, the engineer that's helping us, and we looked at the, the project area. We actually extended it a little bit. They were concerned about the parking lot right now. If somebody wanted to cross over from the west side of Broadway, they would have to go kind of into Hartsville Goodyear's parking lot and then over where we was originally going to end at Wadok. So they were concerned about that. So we moved it down south. So now it actually begin at Depot Street. So it'll be on the south side of the train depot. And then go north, Mary, up to the Highway 25 and 141 intersection by Citizens, well, formerly Citizens Bank and Mexican Grilled Cheese. That area is also going out, that intersection is going out to bid. Should be middle of December for that improvement project there. Which is going to help us score good on this application because they like to connect projects. So, so that said, that'll help us there. There is going to have to be some right away purchased. When you get a little bit further or closer to the intersection, because where the, the poles are sitting, they're going to suggest to run the sidewalk behind the poles. So it'd be the east side of the pole. So you don't have to move those. So they're working on seeing exactly where we may have to purchase some land, but they said it probably wouldn't be no more than three or four feet looking at it. Off existing right away. T dot seemed to be real happy with our application. They were, didn't have any other suggestions or anything. I, I think it's going to score pretty well. They did make a mention of the existing sidewalk going south, the existing sidewalk south on Broadway. They were not too pleased with the state it's in, but right now T dot scores. It's putting new sidewalk down more than it does rehabilitating existing sidewalks. So they did ask us to keep in mind in the future about rehabilitating that existing sidewalk. And I told them we've currently got $40,000 in our budget to do that. And going forward, I'm going to suggest that we rehabilitate the sidewalks we have. And so I told them that might be something that's included in the five year plan we're working on right now. And then every year, once we have a project roll off that, we're going to update the plan every year. So it could be something that's part of that planning as we go forward. But right now I feel really good about our application. I think just last year, there was a couple little items they had some, some questions about. And they gave us some feedback. So we're adjusting our application to take their feedback into account. So I, I feel really good about how we're going to score on this one this year.
You don't need any motions from us or anything. I know we've already done that before.
Yes, sir. You've already done it. And so right now I just have a resident support resolution that's going to go in front of the county commission. We have to have that passed. And then the application is due by October 1st. So that should be in two weeks. So you should have a Monday, hopefully the resolution to be approved by the county commission. That'll be incorporated in the application and it should be submitted by that Friday.
I think that sidewalks on Broadway is a tremendously huge safety issue. I believe is it you, Mayor, that put those items in our packet to read? Somebody put some, I read them. If you read those that you had emailed to you about several different topics, but one of them was about how you can improve quality of life in, in towns and, and things. And sidewalks is one of the biggest safety things that you can, that you can add. It's not your packet here. It was in, it was emailed to you. And I spent some time and looked over that and it's very, very interesting and some very good stuff.
Yeah, as we do, particularly with Tennessee Central doing industrial recruiting and they have multinational companies looking at it. It's one of the things I look at is your infrastructure sidewalks, your parks, all that stuff, how you take care of it. So we are trying to rehabilitate that. And not only that, but you also have the safety factor. I've seen more and more people come in front of administration building, walking through people's yards, trying to go south. And so that should address that. The T dot people particularly saw that as an issue. That's why they said they think it'll score very well. And particularly when you've got residential here and people will be traveling north and that takes them to commercial area. We've got restaurants, particularly grocery stores. So that, they said that'll improve access to those, those services for individuals. So that's why I think, given their feedback, I think we're going to score, score pretty well this year.
That would be great. That would be a great addition to the city and the county with redoing that intersection. Because traffic there is horrible at certain times of the day. And then, like I said, the sidewalks just being a safety, big safety issue. Because the mayor hit the nail on the head, those people over there, as long as they can get to a grocery store. You know, the only two we've got are right up there, you know? So.
And it's kind of connected to that intersection improvement, but not directly. I had asked T dot about what we need to do to do a traffic signal timing study. Because I would, to get the traffic in and out, when you, when you have the backup right now, not only do I think we need to improve that intersection, but also the traffic signal up at Andrews. We need to time those so that you're getting traffic moving in and out in the morning. So I've passed it to them that I would like to see what we've got to do to get those timed up. My feeling is we're probably going to have to improve our, our street lights, I mean, our traffic lights and the control box at that intersection. So that we can do those. I know the one at, the existing one at, right there at the top of Broadway, when it crosses over McMurray. I think that control box is from the 1980s or early 1990s and you're kind of limited as to what you can do on the cycles. So we may have to improve that box there at Andrews, but my thought is to do a type of timing study and so we can get maximum traffic flow through there. So we don't have tremendous backups.
Sounds like a really good idea. All right, any questions for the mayor on, on that topic? You have a report from the building inspector down there. So that you can look at on your own time. Sam, do you have any other things that you'd like to bring the commission up to date on?
I don't have anything else to add, but I can answer any questions that anybody has on the floor that I've provided.
Anybody have any questions on those? That, to me, they were pretty self-explanatory. Okay. Closing remarks from the chair and the commission. I really don't have any remarks. Any commissioner have any items that they would like to make the building inspector or any of us aware of or Mr. Mayor aware of or anything? Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Well, that, that would, could, would very well could be a future, um, addition. Uh, again, that's a state highway, so we would have to work with T dot on, on that. But I think that the primary thing would be get it up to that red light, because then, once a pedestrian gets up there, they can walk much safer in those parking lots to get where they want to go to the store or to wherever than up on the highway. Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not, yeah. I think that would be a great future endeavor. Anybody else have anything else to come before the planning commission this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. I also have a second. We are adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.